In transparent manner in the ways that build greater social accountability of government to citizens, while ensuring efficiency and effective delivery of result. In the implementation of social protection programs, a specific implementation agreement of ORCIA may be executed by the parties for the further stipulate the specific implementation arrangement between the DSWD and LGU Isulan for the implementation of SLP. The CIA shall be authorized by each party authorized representative. Item number two, the MOA serves as initial commitment of the parties to enhance the Tarabasa tutoring program of the DSWD as the Tarabasa tutoring program. The Tarabasa tutoring program shall be implemented in the identified target implementing site by DSWD with the assistance of local social welfare and development office, school division office, and extension program office of state, local universities, and colleges, those needing the support convergence between the parties. The DSWD in coordination with the Department of Education, Commission on Higher Education, National Youth Commission, State University and Colleges, LGEs, and other relevant DEs and stakeholders shall undertake the necessary steps for the successful implementation and expansion of the program. The DSWD recognized the role of local government unit in responding to the emerging needs of the four vulnerable in disadvantage. The LGU recognized the emerging needs present in each jurisdiction those intend to replicate the Tarabasa tutoring program, which can help college student for low-income families and empower them to involve the nation building. The responsibilities of the DSWD, the LGU, through the MSWDO, and the local universities and colleges are specifically stated in the MOA. Recommendation, wherefore premises consider this committee hereby recommend passing the following. Number one, resolution authorizing the municipal mayor Honorable Maritiz K. Palasigi to sign the enter into memorandum agreement with the Department of Social Welfare and Development in relation to the implementation of sustainable livelihood program. Number two, resolution of authorizing the municipal mayor Honorable Maritiz K. Palasigi to sign and enter into memorandum agreement with the Department of Social Welfare and Development in relation to Tarabasa tutoring program. That further proposed the measure to be delivered in the second reading in this session. The committee report on social services, God, senior citizen, LGBTQIA+ and children welfare, your truly chairperson Darlene H. Lama, vice-chairperson Honorable Maria Gina Lynn Mejia, and the secretary Honorable Arden K. Palasigi. That's all my committee report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any comment on the report? There being none, Honorable Lama?
Hello? Mr. Chair, I move my... I move for adoption of my committee report, resolution authorizing moni-
Twenty twenty-five dash zero one.
My committee report number twenty twenty-five dash zero one pursuant to refer matter on this committee.
Second. Okay, so the committee report number twenty twenty-five dash zero one of the committee on social services, God, senior citizen, LGBTQIA+ and children's welfare is adopted and the measures recommended be calendared for second reading this session.
Next committee to report is the Committee on Zoning, Public Works, and Land Use Housing. And this is a joint report, the Committee on Health, Your Honor.
So, Honorable Moises Dolar, the chairman of committee on health is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to everyone. So, this joint committee report number twenty-five dash zero one is deferred for next session, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so this, the committee report or the joint committee report of committee zoning and committee on health is deferred next session.
Next committee to report is the Committee on Games and Amusement.
Okay, so Honorable Morning Mejia is recognized.
Committee on Games and Amusement Committee Report Number two zero two five dash zero two. Pursuant to the referred matters to this committee, the committee Motopropio Perus, the request from Barangay Laguilaian and the same no longer requires the to conduct a committee hearing. Item number one, resolution number zero two dash two zero two five of Barangay Laguilaian authorizing the conduct of cockfighting or pauwakan every Thursday on the following days, February thirteen, twenty, and twenty-seven of two thousand twenty-five, to raise funds for the founding anniversary of Barangay Laguilaian. Second, resolution number zero five dash two zero two five of Barangay Laguilaian authorizing the conduct of a special cockfighting pauwakan on March sixth, thirteen, and fifteen of two thousand twenty-five to raise funds for the founding anniversary of Barangay Laguilaian. The efforts and resolutions were received and stopped by the SB Secretariat on January twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, and the scheduled dates of cockfighting activities are the following. For regular is on February thirteen, twenty, and twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five. For special is on March sixth, thirteen, and fifteen, two thousand twenty-five. The holding of cockfighting activities is in line with the forthcoming founding anniversary of the said barangay. The purpose of the cockfighting activities is to raise funds to support the activities and programs for the celebration of the foundation anniversary of the barangay. For barangay cockfighting, the committee gave emphasis on the adherence of municipal ordinance number two zero zero nine dash one six one ISB, otherwise known as the Cockfighting Code of the Municipality of Isulan, which provides, "The following shall govern the holding of cockfighting in the barangays. There shall be no cockfighting activities in all barangays of this municipality except during the occasion of the celebration of barangay fiestas. The barangay concerned shall only be allowed to hold cockfighting activities for three sessions, and that is during two days before vistfirs and the vistfirs itself, subject to the authority of the Sanguniang Bayan. Only the barangay government shall be allowed to promote cockfighting activities in their respective barangays on the occasion of local fiestas. The request of the Sanguniang Bayan for authority to hold cockfighting activities shall be filed at least fifteen days before the scheduled dates of the cockfighting activities. Failure to comply with the provision shall result in the disapproval of such request. The Committee on Games and Amusement finds that the above schedule of cockfighting activities has substantially complied with the provision of the Cockfighting Code of the Municipality. Finally, the concerned barangay shall secure permit from the office of the mayor to officially conduct the cockfighting activities." Recommendations, based on the foregoing, the committee hereby recommends passing resolution authorizing the municipal mayor to grant permit to barangay laguilaian relative to conduct a cockfighting or pauwakan every Thursday on the following days, February thirteen, twenty, and twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five, and resolution authorizing the municipal mayor to grant permit to barangay laguilaian relative to conduct a special cockfighting or pauwakan on March sixth, thirteen, and fifteen, two thousand twenty-five. Further, that these pressures be deliberated on second reading this session, respectfully submitted by Committee on Games and Amusement, Chairperson yours truly, Vice-Chairperson Darlene H. Lama, and Secretary Honorable Marvin Eldalanon. That's all my committee report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so any comment on the report? There being none?
I move for the adoption of my committee report number two zero two five dash zero two.
Okay, so the committee report of the Committee on Games and Amusement, Committee Report Number twenty twenty-five dash zero two is hereby adopted, and the measure be calendared for second reading this session.
Next committee to report is the Committee on Finance, Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means.
Mr. Chair. Honorable Carlo Pia dos Segundo. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The subject of the report, Mr. Chair, is the committee report of the Committee on Finance, Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means. Committee Report Number twenty twenty-five dash zero four. Pursuant to the referred annual budgets to this committee, the same were forwarded to the Office of the Municipal Budget Officer for preliminary review. In response, on January thirty, twenty twenty-five, this office received copies of the preliminary review of these annual budgets from the Office of the Budget Officer, addressed to the honorable members of the Sanguniyan through this representation. Items, number one, we have the annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five of the Sanguniyang Kabataan of Barangay de Retilia in the amount of seven hundred sixty-seven thousand, three hundred sixty pesos and forty centavos. Item number two, annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five of the Sanguniyang Kabataan of Barangay Kalawag III in the amount of eight hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred sixty-four and thirty centavos. Item number three, annual budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five of Sanguniyang Kabataan of Barangay Impaw in the amount of five hundred nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-eight pesos and thirty centavos for fiscal year twenty twenty-five of Barangay Kalawag II in the amount of... Twenty-three? Twenty-three million, nine hundred eighteen thousand, three hundred twenty-five pesos. Findings, as per preliminary review, the aforementioned annual budgets reveal substantial compliance with RA seventy-one sixty, otherwise known as the Local Government Code of nineteen ninety-one, and its implementing rules and regulations, subject to the following conditions as follows. Item number one, annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five of the Sanguniyang Kabataan of Barangay de Retilia in the amount of seven hundred sixty-seven thousand, three hundred sixty pesos and forty centavos. Number one, the SK funds shall be dispersed in accordance with the provisions of RA ten seven forty-two and its implementing rules and regulations as amended Republic Act Number nine one eight four and such other pertinent laws, rules, and regulations. The Sanguniyang Kabataan Council shall see to it that the programs, projects, and activities included in the supplemental budget are consistent with approved Supplemental Annual Barangay Investment Program, or ABYIP. The Sanguniyang Kabataan, we set aside an amount for mandatory and continuing training of the SK to complement the training fund provided under section twenty-nine of the Sanguniyang Kabataan Reform Act of two thousand fifteen. The total amount appropriated for training shall not be more than fifteen percent of the SK fund. For item number two, for the annual budget of, annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five of the Sanguniyang Kabataan of Barangay Kalawag III in the amount of eight hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred sixty-four pesos and thirty centavos. Number one, the SK funds shall be dispersed in accordance with the provisions of RA Number ten seven forty-two and its implementing rules and regulations as amended by, as amended Republic Act Number nine one eight four and such other pertinent laws, rules, and regulations. Number two, the monthly honorarium of the Sanguniyang Kabataan members, including the SK treasurer and secretary, shall not exceed the monthly compensation received by the Sanguniyang Kabataan Chairperson in accordance with Local Budget Circular Number one four eight dated December twenty-three, twenty twenty-two. Furthermore, not more, not more than twenty-five percent of the Sanguniyang Kabataan funds shall be allocated for personnel services. And item number three, the Sanguniyang Kabataan Council shall see to it that the programs, projects, and activities included in the supplemental budget are consistent with approved Supplemental Annual Barangay Youth Investment Program. Item, item number three, as regard annual budget of the Sanguniyang Kabataan of Barangay Impaw in the amount of five hundred nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-eight pesos and thirty centavos. Number one, strictly follow the accounting policies, guidelines, financial reports, and forms to be used in the SK operations as stated in the handbook on the financial transactions of the Sanguniyang Kabataan released by the Commission on Audit dated January twenty-one, twenty twenty. Number two, the Sanguniyang Kabataan Council shall see to it that the programs, projects, and activities included in the supplemental budget are consistent with the approved Supplemental Annual Barangay Youth Investment Program. For item number four, annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five of the barangay Kalawag II in the amount of twenty-three million, nine hundred eighteen thousand, three hundred twenty-five pesos. Number one, capital outlays such as office equipment, IT equipment, and softwares and furnitures and fixtures with cost below fifty thousand pesos shall be recorded as semi-expendable property pursuant to Commission on Audit Circular Number twenty twenty-two dash zero four dated May thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. Number two, the appropriation and utilization of PPAs under the twenty percent development fund as embedded in the AIP shall strictly comply with the updated guidelines of DILGDBM Joint Memorandum Circular Number two thousand seventeen dash zero one. And number three, the development allocation and utilization of the gender and development planning and budgeting shall be implemented in accordance with PCW-dILG-dDBM-dNEDA Joint Memorandum Circular Number two thousand thirteen dash zero one as amended by PCW-dILG-dDBM-dNEDA Number two thousand sixteen dash zero one. Accordingly, it is recommended that the respective resolution in acting the appropriation ordinance of the afforded annual budgets be declared operative in its entirety. Further, it is understood that this review action does not authorize any item of appropriation that is specifically prohibited or inconsistent with the provisions of law. Finally, in the implementation of these annual budgets, compliance with all existing accounting, auditing, and other administrative rules and regulations shall properly be observed. The same shall be the responsibility of the concerned implementing barangay unit and Sanguniyang Kabataan officials. We recommend, Mr. Chair, the, um... passing of the following resolutions. Number one, resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five of the Sanguniyang Kabataan of Barangay de Retilia involving a total appropriations, appropriation of seven hundred sixty-seven thousand, three hundred sixty pesos and forty centavos operative in its entirety effective January one, twenty twenty-five. Number two, resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five of the Sanguniyang Kabataan of Barangay Kalawag III involving a total appropriation of eight hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred sixty-four pesos and thirty centavos operative in its entirety effective January one, twenty twenty-five. Number three, resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five of Sanguniyang Kabataan of Barangay Impaw involving a total appropriation of five hundred nine thousand, seven hundred thirty-eight pesos and thirty centavos operative in its entirety effective January one, twenty twenty-five. And item number four, resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five of Barangay Kalawag II involving a total appropriation of twenty-three million, nine hundred eighteen thousand, three hundred twenty-five pesos operative in its entirety effective January one, twenty twenty-five. We further recommend, Mr. Chair, that this matter be deliberated on second reading to this session. Respectfully submitted by the Committee on Finance, Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means, Chairperson yours truly, Committee Vice-Chairperson Honorable Moises Al Dolar, and Committee Secretary Honorable Engineer Marvin Eldalanon.
Uh, Honorable Pia, do they... The barangay and the SK barangay, they don't submit at the same time or simultaneous leader budget, no? Kanya-kanya sila submit? Separate submitting SK, separate man of barangay? Sige, any more, any comment? There's none, then will you move, Honorable Pia?
Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of our committee report of the Committee on Finance, Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means Committee Report Number twenty twenty-five dash zero four.
Second. Okay, so the committee report of the Committee on Finance, Budget Appropriation, and Ways and Means Committee Report Number twenty twenty-five dash zero four is hereby adopted, and the measures recommended be calendared for second reading this session.
So, there are no more committee reports, Your Honor. We will proceed now to the calendar business under second reading. So first, we have the resolution to favorably endorse Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash seven of Barangay Impaw requesting the Department of Agrarian Reform through the Secretary Conrado Estrella III to cost the concreting of farm-to-market roads, particularly Barangay Impaw FMR with a length of two kilometer and the project cost of thirty-six million pesos.
Okay, uh, ano na? Uh, District SB, Honorable Pia, the district kagawad of Barangay Impaw?
Mr. Chair, as the DC Councilor of Barangay Impaw may I have the honor to move for the passing of resolution endorsing Resolution Number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero seven of Barangay Impaw, a resolution earnestly requesting the Department of Agrarian Reform through the Secretary Conrado Estrella III to cost the concreting of farm-to-market road at Barangay Impaw Isulan Sultanko.
Second. Okay, so the resolution favorably endorsing to the dark through the Secretary, Honorable Conrado Estrella, the propose concreting of farm-to-market road in Barangay Impaw is hereby approved. Next item, madam secretary.
Next item on second reading is based on the proposed measure based on the committee report of the Committee on Laws, Rules, and Ordinances.
Honorable Blight Garingo is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Without much ado, I move for the passing of a resolution declaring barangay ordinance number three, series of twenty twenty-four of barangay kenram entitled an ordinance strictly implementing the no credentials, no issuance of cattle transport policy and prohibiting the acceptance of bladder or complaints of lost animals without proper credentials in barangay kenram Isulan Sultanko that valid and consistent with the law. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Mr. Chair.
Honorable, uh, Moises Dolar.
Uh, may question ako sa ordinance ngayon sirba. Kung halimbawa being, uh, this is on barangay kenram lang, no? Kung, uh, this is how about the other barangays, uh, hindi maabot si ning ordinance ngayon eh? How about if... Tanong lang ako, no? Kung, uh, himuan tanis ang ordinance nga masakop yang bilog ang municipyo sa Isulan?
Uh, yes, we can do that, Honorable Dolar. But, uh, through the initiative of other or any of the members of this council. In the meantime, uh, the matter is for us to confirm the ordinance of barangay kenram.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so there being no objection, the resolution declaring barangay ordinance number three, series of twenty twenty-four of barangay kenram entitled an ordinance strictly implementing the no credential, no issuance of cattle transport policy and prohibiting the acceptance of bladder or complaints of lost uh, animals. Credential, uh, valid and consistent with law uh, subject to the compliance of all pertinent provisions of RA seventy-one sixty.
Next, Your Honor, is the...
For a while, Honorable Garingo, ano? Acceptance of bladder or complaints of lost animal? Anong buti silang sang complaint of lost animals?
Paano, Mr. Chair, nakatarungan pang barangay nila? Na hindi sila mag-entertain sa mga reklamo kung wala sang credentials.
Uh, okay, para for...
Na ang nagakcomplain, gitiyag ito nga sapat. That's it.
Thank you. Sige. So, next item, madam secretary.
Next, Your Honor, is the request for the urgent passing of resolution for the concurrence of the appointment of Mr. Andrewwell K. Palasigi as municipal administrator.
Okay. Any member would like to sponsor the resolution?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Honorable Garingo.
As the committee chairperson on good government, I am duty-bound to move for the passing of a resolution concurring the appointment of Mr. Andrewwell K. Palasigi as municipal administrator of Isulan.
Okay, so... The date of appointment, madam secretary, tanong nakabutang?
January twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, Your Honor.
January twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And we receive the same on?
We, for a while, Your Honor. So, we receive this, uh... This request, January thirty, twenty twenty-five.
January thirty, twenty, twenty-five.
January thirty.
Twenty-four is Friday, and thirty is Thursday. Okay, so according to the existing rules, Honorable Blight, what is the period for us to act on this matter? Fifteen days from?
From a receipt, Mr. Chair.
Uh, fifteen days from a receipt. Fifteen days from January thirty, twenty twenty-five, okay? So, there is a motion to concord to the appointment of our municipal administrator, Mr. Andrewwell Palasigi. Any comment on the proposed resolution from the other members? Honorable Pia?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to be clarified because as per information, there was a memorandum issued by the Honorable Mayor addressed to, uh, the following employees. Um, allow me to read, Mr. Chair.
Please proceed.
Memorandum dated January twenty-four, twenty twenty-five addressed to, uh, Armidius A. Lavalle, Admin Assistant Two, uh, Sergarecasa Mayor, AO Four, HRMO Three, Ma'am Kristy Marie Bielen, Social Welfare Aid, Mr. Alberto D. Bernabe, Admin Assistant Four. Roger L. Nobleta, uh, Mr. Roger L. Nobleta, Salary Gate I, and Abigail B. Blase, AA1, and Ma'am Ellen Luis. Subject is the showcase order addressed to these employees, Mr. Chair. Uh, the memorandum contains the showcase order requiring these employees to answer why is it that they abandoned their post um, pending the order from the Honorable Mayor. I suppose this was a time during the day, the period wherein there was a suspension before the issue once of a stay order, Mr. Chair. With this, Mr. Chair, it is as if that they're questioning the authority of the acting mayor to reassign these employees in their post. And at present, they're asking the Sanggunean for a concurrence wherein during the time of suspension, the acting mayor terminated the appointment of the administrator.
Uh, what you mean, Honorable Lapiado, is that the...
There is an inconsistency, Mr. Chair.
Yes, the designation made by the acting mayor then was being questioned.
Questioned.
Okay, but uh... Determination made by the acting mayor to Mr. Andrewel Palasigi is recognized by the
Honorable Mayor.
Uh, incumbent mayor now. Uh... That is why there is an appointment submitted uh, for the concurrence of Mr. Andrewel Palasigi. Is that what you mean, Honorable Lapiado? Okay, so that's a good point, but uh... Uh... Uh, yes, Honorable Garingo, any comment on that?
Mr. Chair, it's actually my first time hearing that particular memorandum. Can we just have a clarification that the people who were enumerated earlier, whether or not the people enumerated earlier by Honorable Lapiado are personnel under the office of the mayor? Tama po ba? Or are they from other offices?
Uh, under the, those personnel are under uh, different departments.
Okay.
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 Though some might be under the office of the mayor or under the section under the office of the mayor. Okay, but uh, that's a good point, Honorable Lapiado. But the item or point uh, we are tackling now is about the concurrence. So, any question on the concurrence on the pending uh, on the motion on the floor uh, for the concurrence of Mr. Andrewel Palasigi? Honorable Dalanan, you're raising a point.
Can we check the function of the administrator?
The functions of the municipal administrator is, I think, provided by the local code. Uh, can you assist us, Madam Secretary? There is a question on what are the functions of the municipal administrator?
Government code.
Uh, Honorable Dalanan, um, is it okay with you that the uh, sponsor will answer your question with regards to the functions of the municipal administrator? Or would you like your question to be answered by the appointed administrator himself? Yes, Honorable Dalanan.
Much better if the appointed administrator will answer the question.
Okay, so may we request the secretariat to call the presence of Mr. Andrewel Palasigi if he is available now? Uh, so as not to further delay our time, can we go back to this resolution, Honorable Garingo? When Mr. Andrewel comes around? Okay, can we proceed to another item? In the meantime, Madam Secretary.
So next proposed measure is based on the committee report of the Committee on Social Services, God, Senior Citizens, LGBTQIA+ and Children's Welfare.
Okay, so, Honorable Darlene Lama?
Hello. Um... Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of my committee report resolution authorizing municipal mayor Honorable Maritiz K. Palasigi to sign and enter into the memorandum of agreement with the Department of Social Welfare and Development in relation to the implementation of sustainable livelihood program.
Okay, so, the resolution authorizing the municipal mayor, Honorable Maritiz K. Palasigi, to sign and enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Social Welfare and Development in relation to the implementation of sustainable livelihood program is hereby approved.
Resolution authorizing the municipal mayor, Honorable Maritiz K. Palasigi, to sign and enter into the memorandum of agreement with the Department of Social Welfare and Development in relation to Tarabasa Tutoring Program.
Okay, so the resolution authorizing the municipal mayor, Honorable Maritiz K. Palasigi, to sign and enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Social Welfare and Development in relation to the Tarabasa Tutoring Program is hereby approved.
Next proposed measure is based on the committee report of the Committee on Games and Amusements.
Okay, Honorable General Mihia is recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I move for a resolution authorizing the municipal mayor to grant permit to barangay lagilayan relative to the conduct of cockfighting or pauwakan every Thursday on the following dates, February 13, 20, and 27, 2025.
Okay, so, the resolution authorizing the municipal mayor to grant permit to barangay lagilayan uh, for the conduct of cockfighting or pauwakan every Thursday on the following dates, February 13, 20, and 27 is hereby approved.
And lastly, Mr. Chairman, I move for a resolution authorizing the municipal mayor to grant permit to barangay lagilayan relative to the conduct of special cockfighting or pauwakan on March 6, 13, and 15, 2025.
Okay, so the resolution authorizing the municipal mayor to grant permit to barangay lagilayan relative to the conduct of a special cockfighting/pauwakan on March 16, 13, and 15, 2025 is hereby approved.
So, next proposed measure on second reading is based on the committee report of the Committee on Finance Budget Appropriations and Ways and Means.
Chair.
Uh, Honorable Lapiado is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, I move for a resolution. I move for a passing of a resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of the Sangguneang Kabataan o Barangay di Lutilia involving a total appropriation of 767,360 pesos and 40 centavos operative in its entirety effective January 1, 2025.
Okay, so the resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of Sangguneang Kabataan o Barangay di Lutilia involving a total appropriation of 767,360 operative in its entirety effective January 1, 2025.
Mr. Chair, I move for a resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of the Sangguneang Kabataan o Barangay Kalawag III involving a total appropriation of 882,564 pesos and 30 centavos operative in its entirety effective January 1, 2025.
So the resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of Sangguneang Kabataan o Barangay Kalawag III involving a total appropriation of 882,564 operative in its entirety in its entirety effective January 1, 2025.
Mr. Chair, I move for a passing of resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of Sangguneang Kabataan o Barangay Impaw involving a total appropriation of 509,738 pesos and 30 centavos operative in its entirety effective January 1, 2025.
Any second or? So the resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 of Sangguneang Kabataan o Barangay Impaw involving the amount of 509,738 operative in its entirety effective January 1, 2025.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chair, I move for a passing of resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 o Barangay Kalawag II involving a total appropriation of 23,918,325 pesos operative in its entirety effective January 1, 2025.
So the resolution declaring the annual budget for fiscal year 2025 o Barangay Kalawag II involving a total appropriation of 23,918,325 operative in its entirety effective January 1, 2025. Next item.
So, Your Honor, going back to the request for the concurrence of the appointment of Mr. Andrewel Palasigi as municipal administrator, Your Honor. So accordingly, Your Honor, uh, he cannot uh, attend the session, in today's session, Your Honor. He cannot appear before the session, Your Honor, uh, because he is not feeling well, Your Honor.
Yep, and our notice is also very abrupt, okay? Anyway, we have 15 days to act on the matter, Honorable Garingo. So if we receive it on January 30, we have up to February 15 to act on it. So shall we schedule further deliberation of this resolution on the next session that is on February 10? Are the members present? Do may travel ka mo? Ano to? Ah, wala man? Uh, 18 pa? I think, okay. On February 10, with the request, or we'll send a written request for Mr. Andrewel Palasigi to appear on February 10, 2025. Okay, so the further consideration of this resolution is deferred. Any other item?
Already exhausted items in the order of business. We'll proceed now to the unassigned business.
Okay, unassigned business, Honorable Lapiado.
Mr. Chair.
I'm very sorry, Your Honor. We have still another measure on third and final reading.
Okay, okay, okay.
Sorry, sorry.
Third reading siya, babe.
Please bear with me.
Okay, okay, it's okay. Uh, miss command ya, pon.
Your Honor, the proposed ordinance amending certain provisions of municipal ordinance number 2023-294 ISB.
Okay, so, Honorable Dalanan, will you put into motion the approval on third reading of your ordinance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for third and final reading. I move for the passing of an ordinance amending certain provisions of municipal ordinance number 2023-294 ISB.
Okay, so it's, if it's for third reading, this is for purposes of amendment, uh... Uh, voting nalang. Yes, Honorable Garingo.
Mr. Chair, will reiterate my objection because we have legal reservations on the validity, constitutionality, and legality of the ordinance.
Okay, the objection is uh, noted. Honorable Argent?
Mr. Chair, um, same as last session, I will also reiterate my objection in this matter with the same reasons as of Attorney Kartuhano.
Okay. Did we make some amendment before, Honorable Dalanan? Wala man oh? So... Any more comment on our ordinance from the other members?
Mr. Chair.
Honorable Poskablo.
So I was not able to attend the session last meet, uh, last session, but I object for this matter.
Okay. Although we will be, since there is an objection, we will be dividing the house later and we will register the votes of every members. and we will register the votes of every members. The Honorable Domaran, is he still around, or? Uh, his name is recorded as present earlier. So may we check if he is still present before we will proceed with the voting? Okay, so shall we have a roll call again? Uh, Madam Seketary.
Honorable Arnold Darmada, Honorable Carlo Apiado, Honorable Argent K. Palasigi, Honorable Moises Dular, Honorable Ryan Domaran, Honorable Darlene Lama, Honorable Maria Generalin Mihia, Honorable Marie Blight Kartuhano Garingo. Honorable Jop... Di talaga siya appropriate for the municipality, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Next, Honorable Moises Dular.
Thank you, Madam Masik, and of course, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I go for yes, Mr. Chair accordingly. Mayara na ina siyang Republic Act.
10969. Ah... 10969.
10969, otherwise known as Free Irrigation Service Act, no? Wotsi Lingon. Ang paghatag sa mga irrigation sa mga farmers ta dapat libre na. Hindi na ang pasokton sa ilang crop juice, wotsi lingon. Ngakada krapeng, ginasukot sila sang tag 500 ang aton mga farmers. So hindi na pasokton, magcounterpart na lang ang aton, ang aton nga LGU. Instead nga magbayad sila. So, or a yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Next is Honorable Darlene Lama.
Hello. Yes, Mr. Chair. Pabor sa tanan. Thanks.
Next is Honorable Maria Generalin Mihia.
I'll go for a yes, Mr. Chairman. Tungod kay ako kapati nga nying aton nga, otor ko otor, and of course, the member of this committee, Mr. Chair. As, studuhan ginmaayu ining ordinance nga ini una sa tanan para makabulig, hindi lang makabulig sa ibang nga tao, kunin makabulig man sa aton nga mga farmers. Kay nakita natoon, Mr. Chairman, kung ano man kabudlay, no? Ang ginapagdaanan sining aton nga mga farmers, especially sa mga nagligad nga mga tinuig, Mr. Chairman. So, ining ordinance, kapati ako, nga kahit papano, sa gamay nga pamaagi, makabulig kita sa aton nga mga farmers, kag sa pangabuhin nila, Mr. Chair.
Next, Your Honor, is Honorable Marie Blight Kartuhano Garingo.
Um, being an agricultural town, we, our economy heavily relies on the agriculture sector. And hence, legislations like this, which I know will be down to the marginalized agricultural sector in our municipality. I believe that this is a noble, noble ordinance, however, it is imbued with, um, and it is imbued with a lot of questions with respect to its validity and legality. When this ordinance was enacted, I was on my maternity leave, Mr. Chair, but if I were present, I would have objected to it because of the imposition, first, of the 4% mandatory rate for the agricultural sector. There is no national law, not even the General Appropriations Act, or any issuance by any concerned department, by the Office of the President or of the Department of Agriculture, or any other agency of the government that mandates this imposition. Second, Mr. Chair, I believe this is a class legislation that only benefits, not even the farmers per se, but a private organization, which is a, an Irrigators Association. So being, for me, I will consider it as a class legislation, which is a desecration of our constitution because it violates the equal protection clause that is protected by our constitution. Third, Mr. Chair, it is mentioned in this, in the original ordinance and even in the amendment that the 4% may be sourced out from the 20% development fund. But, Mr. Chair, the 20% development fund is under the absolute fiscal autonomy of the Municipal Development Council that not even the Sangguniang Bayan can encroach in the decision of the MDC. In the same way, Mr. Chair, in the provision of this mandatory ordinance, there is a provision there that mandates that the local government should collaborate with the Irrigators Association that are duly accredited by the NIA in deciding the PPAs that will be funded using this earmarked 4%. So what if portion of that 4% will be derived from the 20% development fund? Wouldn't be another encroachment to the fiscal autonomy of the council that is empowered by law, the national law, to decide on what to do with the 20% development fund, that not even the Sanggunian can enjoin, or amend, or repeal, or change, we can only recommend. And lastly, Mr. Chair, upon reading of this amendment, Mr. Chair, it is clear that it will only benefit Irrigators Associations and not the farmers per se. An Irrigators Association, Mr. Chair, is a private entity. And under Section 335 of the Local Government Code, it says that no public money shall be applied for private purpose and for no other reason, Mr. Chair. I am objecting to this local ordinance.
Next, to give this manifestation is the author, Honorable Marvin Dalanon.
Thank you, Sek, and to the August Buddy, good morning. For the 20% Development Fund, the amendment states 10% of the 20% Development Fund can be considered as part of this allocation if it is located in the agriculture area of the municipality, which will include construction of the farm-to-market road, drainage canal, irrigation canal, small water impounding facility, and post-harvest facilities. The amendment did not strictly tell the local development council to allocate the 10% of its 20% development fund for this matter, but to consider it as part of that 4% if it is that projects enumerated in that section. And for this, I would like to say yes and 200%, as I am the author of this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Next, Madam Sek.
Your Honor, Honorable...
Jofe Durana.
Jofe Durana, Your Honor.
Yes, thank you, Ma'am Sekretary. May I wag agid sa tanan, no? Uh, the municipal ordinance at 2023-294 ISB. Vibo ako, Mr. Chair, kay nakita ko gide nga, akong sa diin, uh, although na ano siya sa Irrigators Association, pero ang makabinipit sini, Mr. Chair, ang bilog nga farmers dari sa Banwasang Isulan. So gusto ko lang ah, isa ako mag, isa ako sa maghes sa sininga ordinance kay nakita ko, uh, although na private entity siya, pero ang intensyon natoon is para sa kadaban sa mga farmers dari sa Banwasang Isulan, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next.
Honorable Regent Poskabllo.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I respectfully disagree with this ordinance. It appears to be no clear legal basis for the allocation of this manner. Moreover, this ordinance seems to favor Irrigators rather than addressing the broader needs of the farmers, which undermines its intended purpose of supporting the agricultural sector as whole.
Okay, so Madam Seketary.
So with the result of the nominal voting, Your Honor, three members voted for the, objected for the approval of the ordinance, while seven members voted in the affirmative, Your Honor.
Six lang.
Your Honor, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Your Honor, but the only six members.
Okay, so with the majority of all members approving this ordinance with a vote of six, with three objections. So this ordinance, title be wrong. Uh, this ordinance, uh... Anong number niya? This ordinance, sorry, number 2023-29... Hindi. May number niya siya ngayon. Okay, so this ordinance amending 327, okay, this ordinance, number 327, amending certain provisions of Municipal Ordinance Number 2023-294 ISB, institutionalizing a minimum of 4% of the annual budget intended for the agricultural infrastructure development of the municipality of Isulan is hereby approved on third reading.
So, Your Honor, we have no more items in the order of business. Well, proceed now to the unassigned business.
Okay, so any matter or item unassigned business? No more? Honorable Jofe Durana is recognized.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, the ordinance stated by Honorable Garingo. Uh, pwede ba yun, Mr. Chair, for the whole, uh, Isulan na lang, Mr. Chair? For the whole, barangay na lang, I mean, 17 barangays na lang, ang iano nato, Mr. Chair. Yung ordinance na inano ni Ma'am Garingo, with regards sa cattle, oh. Not only for the barangaya kindra, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Uh, so... Yes, Honorable Apiado?
Um, Mr. Chair, the committee headed by Honorable Garingo only acted on the referred matter.
Yes.
Uh, since all ordinances passed by the barangay shall be reviewed by the higher Sanggunian, which is the Sangguniang Bayan. In this case, if any member of the body opted or wanted to sponsor or, uh, author or sponsor, the passing or an ordinance requiring, uh... the strict implementation of no credential, no issuance, may may opt or may may ano. It was the ABC President and Honorable Dular a while ago who manifested the intent, or manifested that they would like to, to sponsor the said legislative measure, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so this way, uh, on suspended rules, shall we take that as, uh, an item for first reading? No? The ordinance, uh... Uh, ano to? Yes, Honorable Apiado, can you state the title?
An ordinance strict, uh, strictly implementing the no credential, no issuance of cattle transport policy and prohibiting the acceptance of blather complaints of lost animals with a proper credential in the municipality of Isulan.
Okay, so shall we consider that as being, uh, an item on first reading and being read? There are, and the same is referred to, the Committee on Agriculture? Are you a member of the committee, Honorable Jofe?
I'm not a member, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Honorable Dular? Okay, so... The committee can invite Honorable Durana as the co-author, being the ABC President, okay? Uh, yes, Honorable Garingo?
Mr. Chair, considering that the implementation of our proposed ordinance is under the barangay governments, why not refer it also to the barangay, to the Committee on Barangay Affairs? So all barangay chairman will attend and, kasi sila man mag-implement, hindi man to sa aton.
Okay, so joint referral, Committee on Agriculture and Committee on Barangay Affairs. Tama. Thank you. Okay, anymore? Uh, let's go.